Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. We would like to begin as is customary with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Right, we have a public comment from Mr. David Weisner. Welcome, dear.
Good morning, sir, ma'ams. David Weisner, forty to ten gap with a back to the gap update. As of the seventeenth of October, we've already had nine thousand two hundred and eleven personnel turn on the gap. So off to another busy year. In fact, this week, we will have over seventy-five-hundred troops, personnel turning on the gap. Just finished up our Warfighter eighteen exercise with the Forty-Second Infantry Division at the New York National Guard. They are all on their way home. Had a very successful exercise. And that stages us in the coming years with many more division-level exercises, which brings roughly an additional three to five thousand troops on the gap. So it's a good thing for the area, a good thing for the economy. Next month, date to be determined, we're going to have a ground-bake breaking ceremony for construction for a training support center. Big thing in the Army, just to expand on that a little bit. Most National Guard installations have a training support center where units from all over a geographic area come and get simulators and training aids. Forty to ten gap and the Pennsylvania National Guard is one of two National Guards that actually have a geographical authority or mission. We have one, hence we're getting a much larger training support center, and we're getting some military construction from it. But that's a big mission. Our area that we're responsible for is our great Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with many, not only National Guard, but Army Reserve units that are going to come to the gap and get the draw their training aids and training support, but also we're going to cover down on the great state of West Virginia and also the northern half of Maryland. So that's kind of a big thing for us, an activity that we do. Makes forty to ten gap what it is, is a lot of ways a national asset to our Department of Defense. So I always like to put that plug in so our citizens of Lebanon County know what a mission we do over there and the importance of it. Prescribed burn season has kicked off. That's going to run through about mid-November. With that said, today, we're going to prescribe burn twenty-five acres. Our prescription burning program is critical to our diversity of our ecosystem, but more importantly, it protects our neighbors by takes away a fuel load where if we inadvertently set off a range fire, it stays on our property. Have a very highly-trained forestry wildland fires crew, probably some of the better ones, I would dare say, in the state from the event of fires that may handle all notifications with the local fire departments and various stakeholders are given before we go into one of those. Lastly, Sally will be glad to know for as far as a live-fire exercise, which is out twenty-ninth of October through the second of November, that is when we're going to shoot artillery mortars. We appreciate everybody's patronage on that. Lastly, hunting season is under swing with the archery season. We have already harvested sixty-seven here from the gap. That's good archery equipment, so we will go on with that with a great harvest if anybody is interested in hunting on the gap. We have a fully automated system which gives the safety briefing now and allows you to go ahead and buy forty to ten gap hunting permit. Best place to get information is at this website, fig, F-T-I-G, dot I sportsman, you spelled that I and then sportsman, dot net. That will lead you to a site where you can accomplish all those tasks of becoming registered and safety briefs on around the gap. Other than that, depending on any of your questions, that's all I have.
I was going to say, I know several years back, I organized a tour, and this was before your time, but there were a lot of the simulators in like truck boxes. Were they all becoming beside with the expansion?
Some of them are. With the expansion, we'll store a lot of those components. They're very digital, automated now. So this gives us a place to get them
Out of the weather.
Out of the weather and sustaining their lifestyle longer. And in addition, this building is going to have more and more classroom or simulator space so we can move some of these simulators that we run now in the trailers, we're going to be able to run them indoors. Very versatile space for us and with the complexity of the simulators that we have, it's a much-needed thing for us to build.
I was curious about that because, as you say, electronics are sensitive to moisture and cold.
Oh, yes, and they're highly computerized and, you know, it'll be much more efficient for us to even than that. Yes?
You have a forester on staff?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of the spotted lantern fly?
Oh, yes, sir. We just had our environmental briefing where I teach staff yesterday that was covered in detail about the encroachment of the insect. They're very much even going through and developing as sightings of that species gets closer, what safety procedures we're going to put in even for units that are going out in the field of training, what would be our reaction to obviously get them to check their vehicles before they leave.
Are you aware that Berks County is having a workshop and having federal and state --
I believe we're going to have attendance at that workshop. So we real closely coordinate being a governmental agency with.
We're not going to be able to, the commissioners are not going to be able to attend that because it's during our budget process.
Right.
But would you have them keep us informed?
I will ensure, sir, that they are going to attend that or we're going to have representation in that, and we certainly would be able to get you some notes for what they say.
What's the name of the --
It's the lantern.
Spotted lantern fly.
Fly.
Imported from China, thank you.
My wife is still dealing with snake bugs.
Oh, no, me too.
And she's from Allentown, but she moved away before the snake bugs came, and that's a big issue with us, so I deal with that. That's what I tell her.
David, can you tell me anything about the dimensions of the project and project cost of this transport center?
I would rather get you the exact number so I don't get misquoted on the particular number, but it's a considerable project that's kicking off in the millions, obviously. So we can certainly give me your email, we can hit that to you.
Sure.
Between the VA investment and the gap investment, Lebanon County is really a great beneficiary.
It's a definite economic driver. I mean, last economic study we have done with our, just our economic value yearly to the gap is five hundred million dollars. I mean, that's, that sneaks up on a lot of people with the magnitude of that.
David, is seventy-five-hundred getting close to your max or --
That's pretty much about every bit we have on post, we'll get occupied at night, so.
Sounds like a big number.
But that is a normal course of business for us, and it's like I tell a lot of people that are area merchants and in business, the gap differs from an active Army installation or by the fact they do business Monday through Friday. On a guard installation, we start spending up on Thursday already, Friday, Saturday is the very heavy day, Sunday they prep to go home, and Monday is when what we call the trail party, that's full-timers that come and turn equipment. It's a little bit different of a cycle that goes on, but that's a lot of people to manage as we get up to those levels. But we've been doing it for years.
Sure. Thank you for the updates.
Thank you all.
Mrs. Newman with our treasurer's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, sure. First, the document minutes from our last minute.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any additions, conditions, or corrections? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post save signs, so moved. And before Sally begins, would you like to introduce your guest? Be sure.
Yes, actually, I would like to have Sarah tell us a little bit about herself so she can be recorded on the record.
My name's Sarah Moreland. I'm a senior at Cedar Press High School and in my job, I'm a missives, and I put on a joint in political science or government up here, so very grateful for something.
Thank you for joining us.
All right, now Sally.
Okay. We had receipts on October the seventeenth and eighteenth of two million eight hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. That brought us to a total cash of three million three hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Our expenditures this week were three million one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents. We had a distributed tax claim of nine thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. So we have a balance of two hundred thirty-two thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-two cents.
Thank you. Make a motion.
Second?
Motion to second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered. Thank you, Sally.
Sure.
Michelle Lees, morning Director of Human Resources.
Breanna Shay, Human Resources Assistant.
Proceed.
Moving on to personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Emily Harnagie, Secretary/Interpreter, resignation effective October twentieth. Cynthia Acosta, General Clerk A, loader, resignation effective October twentieth. Dawn Eiblberger, full-time LPM removal effective October second. Nicholas Pepley, casual part-time correctional officer, removal effective August twenty-first. Tyler Lasik, casual part-time correctional officer, removal effective October eighteenth. Kelly Keener, part-time court clerk, resignation effective October thirteenth. And Brianna Kohler, full-time developmental assistant, termination effective October tenth.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as presented.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to Ethel Malley, lease of absence. Beth Ann Bates from Community Action Partnerships, four to six week lease of absence effective September thirteenth.
So moved.
Second?
Make a motion in second to approve that lease of absence. Any questions? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Ivan Muniz, change of status from General Clerk C in the clerk of courts to General Clerk C/Interpreter in the clerk of courts at a rate of eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents bi-weekly plus fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents bi-weekly for interpreter pay effective October ninth. Inochka Ayala, change of status from part-time clerk, clerk, excuse me, court clerk in the clerk of courts to part-time court clerk in the prosecutor's office, no change in her rate effective October twenty-third.
Make a motion to approve the changes of status as presented.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, the prison would like to hire Caitlin Dardis as a full-time LPM at the rate of sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents per hour effective October twenty-third. And Renova would like to hire Antonio Ruiz as a full-time developmental assistant, second shift at the rate of eleven dollars and fifty-six cents per hour with a forty-five cents shift differential effective November sixth.
Motion.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board. A motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following two corrections. Jeremy Wenrich and Timothy Quinlan, both telecommunicators in EMA, both incremental increases of correction in the rate to eighteen dollars and one cent, both effective October eighth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved in second. Do we approve those changes and adopt the previously agreed to --
Sally's.
Sally's. Changes, yes. Make a motion in second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
A mandated conference seminars, Tyler Stein Snyder from Children and Youth would like to attend the following four trainings. In-home safety assessment and management in Mechanicsburg, November twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and December first. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, eighteen credits, mandated by DHS. And using interactional helping skills in Mechanicsburg, November fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, eighteen credits, mandated by DHS. Introduction to P.A. Child Welfare System in Mechanicsburg, November first. Mileage meals and tolls reimbursement, six credits, mandated by DHS. And identifying child abuse in their block to Mechanicsburg, November eighth and ninth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, twelve credits, mandated by DHS. Robert Sutherland from Children and Youth would like to attend Supporting Case Workers and Using Critical Thinking Skills, Mechanicsburg, November twenty-second. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, six credits, mandated by DHS. Thomas Smith from Children and Youth would like to attend Child on Child Sexual Abuse in London, October twenty-sixth, twenty-dollar total registration fee, mileage reimbursement, four credits, mandated by DHS. Marie Hernandez and Nicole Ruwa from Children and Youth would like to attend the Lost Grief, Dying Death AIDS, and Substance Abuse Training in Mechanicsburg, November fourteenth and fifteenth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, twelve credits, mandated by DHS. Anna Marquest from Children and Youth would like to attend Endings and Transitions, Managing Staff Retention, in Mechanicsburg, November eighth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, six credits, mandated by DHS. Sharon Gassert, Marjorie Holwick, Janine Mauser, and Angelica Farisi from Children and Youth would like to attend the Regional Convenings for Act Thirty-Three Terms, in Mechanicsburg, November third. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, six credits, mandated by DHS. Crystal Liebman from the DA's Office would like to attend the P.A. DUI Association Annual Meeting in Seven Springs, November sixth. Two hundred seventy-five dollar total registration fee. Lodging meals, tolls, reimbursement, mandated by P.A. DUI Association. Brandi Foal from NHIDE would like to attend the CPR and First Aid in Lebanon, November ninth. Forty-five dollar total registration fee, mileage reimbursement, four credits, mandated by OCTO. Samantha Ley from probation services would like to attend Back from the Brink in Mannheim, December eighth. Seven point five credits, mandated by PBPP. Dawn Putin from probation services would like to attend a Growing Concern, Child on Child Sexual Abuse in London, October twenty-sixth. Twenty-five dollar total registration fee, four credits, mandated by JCGC. And Dwight Penberth from probation services would like to attend the Essentials of Supervision at State College, October nineteenth. Fifty dollar total registration fee. Meals reimbursement, six credits, mandated by PBPP.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I believe I'm missing one other one. Daniel Marshall is also supposed to attend that training.
Make a motion to approve the mandated conference attendance as presented.
Second?
Motion in a second to adopt the, accept the mandated seminar request. Any questions or comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Under non-mandated or requested conference seminars, I trust of Osmond and Deanna Basra from Area Agency and Asian would like to attend Protective Services Regional Meeting in Gettysburg, November second, with mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Have we approved that request? Any questions, comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Brianna Spangler from EMA would like to attend the Mental Health First Aid in Mount Bretonna, November ninth, with meals reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve the EMA conference attendance.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Danielle Hall from ITS would like to attend the PMP, C-A-P-M exam prep course online beginning October twenty-sixth through December fourteenth. One thousand one hundred dollar course fee, no other reimbursements. So moved.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Do we approve that IT request? Any questions or comment? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Michael Anderson and Joel Langson from voter registration would like to attend the AECEP Winter Meeting in Wyomissin, December seventh, and eight hundred dollar total registration fee with mileage, meals, and parking reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve the voter registration conference attendance.
Second?
Make a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, morning. Michael, just to introduce yourself and then your colleague there, and we'll go from there.
Michael Anderson, chief clerk, voter registration. Dustin Shaple.
Make sure.
Nathan.
I'm sorry.
Voter registration. That's good. I see you picked up on it really well the first time.
Very good.
I would like to convene the election board at this time, and you can proceed.
Good morning. I'm here today to ask permission to run the public notice that is required by the election code. The public notice will be run in two newspapers that have distribution in all or part of Lebanon County. The two newspapers that we have used in the past have been the Lebanon Daily News and the Hummels Town Sun. Hummels Town Sun has distribution in the Palma area. And the public notice I have given you, I have these ahead of time. This is fairly large. This is the largest one that we do because we do have to not only list the, some of the information regarding absentee ballots, our proclamation, but then all of the, all the offices that will be in every ballot within the county. Then we also have to have the constitutional amendment question, and then also we have three retention questions. And then we also list every polling location, so fairly, fairly large proclamation, excuse me, public notice.
Do I have a motion to approve the other --
Also, my --
No, no, you don't have to say it. And questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Could you summarize in just a couple of sentences the question for the ballot?
That's good. Okay. That is a good question because it is something that has come up not only in our forward hearing, but in the other divisions. We have to be very careful of how and what we say about it. We don't want to persuade anybody.
Can you just say what the question is?
Sure, absolutely. The question is referring to, I'm actually just going to, if you don't mind, I'll read the question and then have you go from there. Because part of the public notice also has the Office of Attorney General's plain English statement regarding the question. But the question is, shall the Pennsylvania Constitution be amended to permit a General Assembly to enact legislation authorizing local taxing authorities to exclude from taxation up to one hundred percent of the assessed value of each homestead property within a local taxing jurisdiction, rather than limit the exclusion to one-half of the median assessed value of all property which is the existing law?
Thank you.
So that is the only reason. Does that help with your --
Not everyone gets the names.
I understand. Yeah, so we do have those, that question along with the English statement in our office for anybody that wants to review that.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips has a question.
Sure. Just since you're using the Sun as part of --
Yes.
Are you allowed to use the merchandiser which would have more coverage and maybe be a little less expensive?
The answer to your question is no. We researched that last November. We had solicitor, Dave Warner, check that first, because they do not qualify. The election code specifically says newspaper and describes what a newspaper is in the election code. We did some research for us, and that does not qualify since it's a free publication.
This just seems like it's a, I'm going to ask it every year because as the newspaper certain issue diminishes, it doesn't seem like it.
And the cost doesn't, it goes up, so, you know, it's on the future seat, you know, my budget that, you know, this will be a very expensive public notice to publish.
I suppose the issue with the merchandiser is that it's not a subscription.
Correct. It's not paid for, and therefore it's not qualified as a subscription.
And we can't use radio.
Correct. It has to be in two publications, two newspaper publications, correct? That's what the election code's policy is. I could tell you that there's been discussions, Department of State, to try and have that looked at with the General Assembly.
If, you know, trends continue in the publishing industry, newspaper publishing industry, and say the Lebanon Daily News were to go to three days a week in the Sunday paper, what would you do?
Consult our solicitor.
The Red Eagle would cover the other end of the calendar.
Yeah, I know that we have used the Patriot News in the past for just --
Patriot is not a weekly, a daily either.
The frequency doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think it's the fact that it's a newspaper of paid subscription, newspaper of general circulation.
Well, then the, then the question about the daily news would be fine.
Yeah, because there are, I mean, especially those of you who get to northern Pennsylvania, a lot of areas that are only covered by weekly newspapers, you know, and so the frequency isn't the issue, it's the paid, it's the paid subscription that the merchandiser is not.
Do you know if that changed? Because that used to be part of the reasoning that we were given.
No, I think it was always the paid, the paid part. Yeah, I don't think it matters how frequently, but the frequent, it doesn't, it doesn't specify daily, it's general, newspaper of general circulation, and it must be a paid. I'm not sure what the, you know, the reasoning or the logic behind the paid part is, but...
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the advertisement as presented by our Director of Voter Registration, and we've had significant discussion. Are there any other questions before we might call for a question? All right, with that said, all those in favor of approving the advertisement indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your advertisement is approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And we call for a motion to adjourn the Board of Elections.
Second?
We adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a CD gen. George. I'm sorry, I didn't see you again, and I apologize. Good morning.
Good morning. The county commissioners, I am here as I hope they're going to say this on a patient.
George, would you mind just introducing yourself and then go ahead? Introduce yourself.
I am George Christensen. I reside at three forty-one South Paul Street, and I'm here on behalf of a property owner's, Mr. Ron Davis and Mr. Yonner and Bordersville property's applying for a LERA application from the county for a property which is on Bordersville Road. I don't know if you can see this, but it's a thirty-two acre tract. This is the new Ford Road that comes through the development, and this is Bordersville Road. This is abutted by the interstate from Bordersville Road, so it's basically a very isolated piece. applying for a LERTA application from the county for a property which is on Bordersville Road. I don't know if you can see this, but it's a thirty-two acre tract. This is the New Forge Road that comes through the development. And this is Bordersville Road. This is abutted by the interstate to Bordersville Road, so it's basically a very isolated piece. It is thirty-two acres and is anticipated that there will be placed on that property, a four hundred thousand square foot facility. The property has been certified by the township as LERTA eligible. And the matter was then taken to township and they approved it for LERTA as well as Northern Lebanon School District. I have prepared a petition or a resolution for you. One that I gave to Jamie is correct. However, I have attached to this one the map together with the final description for the thirty-two point nine two five acres.
You wrote it a map here also?
Oh, did I? I would want to. That very simply, the specifics of this LERTA application are similar to the other ones, but in specificity to the issues which were raised by the county commissioners in paragraph three C, so long as the exemption granted here in the effect, applicants shall not file an appeal from the assessment of properties contained in the construction. I will tell you that the assessments on new construction, generally speaking, from the assessment office have been twenty-five thousand, twenty-five dollars a square foot. So the assessment on this property will be approximately ten million dollars. It is not going to assess yet, but that is what is based upon the last assessments that I reviewed here. What is anticipated here, there is not a present tenant. The present tenant that being looked at is a Nashville chain. I can't tell you. There's no signed lease at this point in time. Although I've had, although I don't represent any of those people, I represent the people on the land. I have had conversations with them in regard to it. This property at one point, there was a ball jewelry store back there. It's probably the last jewelry store in the township, which will never be there, but it hasn't been there for the last thirty years, although the signs still look the same since Ball is there. Somebody here bought from, from Balls?
I used to work for them actually when I was a woman.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have in regard to.
George, who's the, the builder? You're, you're actually working for the builder, right?
Who is the builder? He's the same builder which built the other property which we talked about the last time. It is Centurium out of Walton Barnaro. I believe he's the builder.
And Smith is the owner.
He built, he built four hundred thousand square feet, which was completed. Only thing that has not been released from that barn until, and there is a gas, I think about fifteen thousand dollars for trees or something of that nature.
Yes, but that.
Yeah, around that number, but the rest of it has been totally completed.
Is that building occupied?
It is not occupied, but according to my conversation with him last week, it was supposed to be occupied on the fifteenth January. They have had to.
Any other questions?
George, you did not mention a specific use for this, and I'm assuming that's because you, you don't know what tenant you're going to have in there, but can I assume that it's a warehousing type organ?
It will be a. If, yes, it will be a warehousing. However, it, at this point, might well be production. Years ago, I had to build a warehouse down in the east end of town. And very simply, while it's a warehouse, it also town-specific coast feather, which employed four, fifteen years, about seventy people. It's that general type of operation which is set being contemplated at this point in time. I do not, there is no lease on it. The only reason I know that they talk to me about that kind of situation.
Thank you.
This property, this thirty acre south Bordersville Road.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea what the selling price was from the original owner to this concern here?
Yes, it will be on record. It is five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand, okay.
And they also add utilities like water and sewer and roads to the base price that he pays full taxes on from the beginning.
That's correct.
Yes.
Anything for the township?
No.
We got, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any other questions or comment? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye.
Sorry, opposed?
Aye.
Jamie, if you need something else, go talk to me.
I would like to.
The motion carries. We have a split vote, but.
No, I just like to explain my vote. And I don't enjoy necessarily being in the dissenting side of these issues. I just think that things are out of sequence, Solicitor, in that if we're asked to make a vote on a LERTA, we should know who the occupant is and what they're actually going to be involved in as far as the trade and so on, and the kind of jobs and the salaries of the jobs, because that's an important part of the, the piece. And this idea that we should approve a LERTA on something that's going to be built and have no idea that there's any commitment by a business or whatever to move in there. And as indicated by when I asked a question before, we approved the LERTA before and that building still isn't occupied. So I don't know if we can change the process, George, so that we can get a commitment.
I would love to be able to change the process, and I do understand your comments. Quite frankly, I think the whole system is out of sync because when I built my four hundred thousand square feet, there wasn't any LERTA. So I think it's personally out of sync, but see that as a day. With the present tenor of commercial development and commercial understanding, I would love to be able to do that. I don't know how to do that. I'd be more than happy to discuss it with you. I think the whole LERTA situation is where it is. I think there are different philosophies. I believe Myers-Santoro is taking that philosophy now at this point in time. It, it should be discussed in toto rather than. I'm here for this project and I appreciate.
No, as, as I know, I indicated to Commissioner Phillips when we were at the Ace Hardware Open House up there, I think it was the Ace Hardware, or no, it was when they were discussing. I had voted against that one. And I said, had I had all the information about Ace Hardware and what they were actually going to be doing, I would have been willing and able to vote in favor of that LERTA. So it, it does, it does weigh on me and, and make a determining factor as to how I vote on these. So for what that's worth, I at least want it to be on the record. I'm, I'm not opposed to the concept. I just want to be sure that we're getting a good deal. Because it is, it is a lot of money put off. So, thank you.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that some other time. Sit down and go there.
I have a question. You're done with it? You're done with Attorney Christians and Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, on LERTAs, and it has nothing to do with you. You're, you're the middleman.
Okay.
You're the middleman. On LERTAs, I can't get a LERTA. Do I think I should, I should have one? Yeah? Why? Seniarity. My people came here three hundred years ago and settled this whole valley on my mother's side. I can't get on farm preservation. I don't own a farm. I wasn't lucky enough. My old man didn't leave me a hundred fifty acre farm. Can I get them clean and green? No. I don't own ten acres. And my four little tomato plants this summer did not yield two thousand dollars or more in agriculture products. I can't get on any of that. I was just informed, North Lebanon Township, I'm gonna have another tax put on me, a small one, three forty dollars, for stormwater management. Okay? People ask me, what is stormwater management? I said, it's rainwater. Rainwater's been taking care of itself from day one on this planet. It seeks its lowest level unless you dam it up. But what is the bottom course is a Chesapeake Bay. We're all gonna pay to clean up the Chesapeake Bay. Am I polluting the Chesapeake Bay? No, I'm not. Who's polluting the Chesapeake Bay? The farmers. Here we go. But you can't say none of the bots are farmers. According to you people, the farmer was put here by your god. They're the steward of the land. So they get a break. They're polluting it, but I gotta pay to clean it up. On and on and on. There. That's my checkbook. I'm quoting them like this because it's smoking. Let me read.
But we, we already had the public comment.
Let me read. Three hundred ninety-two dollars, four hundred fourteen dollars. My furnace puked. Taxes, I'm going right down to pay the last installment. Four fifty-nine. My door, my garage door opener puked. I had to put another one. See, the hits just keep coming. And I'm what's known as a senior citizen on a fixed income. Now hopefully I provided for I and my wife. But now you get this and this and this. We got a, a senator in this building, won't mention his name, his office is here. I see it's election time. You can always tell election time because now he had a column that long in the Patriot Paper. We gotta reform property tax. We gotta do away with it. But what did he do? He, all his energies he expended to do what? Legalize weed. In my lifetime, I'm never gonna see the elimination of property tax, Phillips. Now, do I look like an angry old man? Yeah, I am angry. Because you see, the middle class is just getting screwed and screwed and screwed. And this guy comes in here and they get almost tax-free for ten years. Something's not, like he said, like George says, something's wrong here. You see? And by the way, me sitting here running off the mop, I did it for fifteen years. What did I accomplish? Zero. But I study history. And it's coming, people. One day the commissioners about thirty years from now are gonna be hanging those line, let them light posts out there. But whatever. I'm just a old man that likes to run off of the mop, right? Problem is I got an intel, I got an IQ one hundred thirty-eight. I'm out of here.
I'm glad he wasn't here. Or he's glad he wasn't here.
I'm surprised.
First, I have a agreement for medical assistance transportation program for first aid and safety control to provide transportation to eligible clients.
To which clients?
Eligible.
Eligible.
MACP by first aid and safety.
Second.
In second, any other questions or comment? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
I have a provider agreement given to me by Jim Holtry for children and youth. And this is a revised provider agreement with the AVANCO for the administration of the Child Accounting and Profile System, which is a statewide program. This agreement was, was revised with CCAP's oversight several months ago. There was a breach of the system on the, on the web. And while they were able to sort out whose information was breached and notify those people in the event that anything came of it, they went back and revised the agreement with AVANCO to provide more protections, notifications, in, in, in the way of power outages, any suspected breaches, just basically beefed it up so that if anything like that happens again, it's not, it's not, not that happen where it's something you don't play that role. Each county in the state has this agreement. And CCAP was the one revising it. And sets it along with the recommendation that the county's approved.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in seconded that we, CCAP's recommendation. Can I make a question? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
I have a resolution which Dave Warner just discovered yesterday that this is needed by the title company representing the county in the purchase of two seventeen East Wyman Street, which was approved several weeks ago. This resolution is authorizing the purchase and authorizing me as signature for any documents to set up the property.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded that we put the paperwork for the Wyman Street property. Any questions or comment? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
I have a proclamation for K.C.A. Emmler, troop four fifteen in Cornwall, who is receiving his Eagle Scout Award and will be recognized at his Court of Honor ceremony on October twenty-first. And he earned this, his project toward his eagle, was building and installing that at Bluebird Houses for the Clarence Shaw Memorial Park.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second that we approve that Eagle Scout proclamation. Any questions? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Is he here? Okay, there's a second. So I have something to address.
That was Casey Long, Senator Beattie.
I heard that too. I just heard the first name.
That went through everybody's mind.
Yes, over the years, people have asked about a county flag. And I had researched it. Actually, I've discussed it with Kathy over the years. Rosemary Swanger tried to get one, different ones. And I finally just thought, I think what I will do is work on this. And I, I played around with it and I brought along a sample of what I did. And essentially, thinking back to the bicentennial, there was a, a nice design donated to the county by a student. And in paint, I was able to do a little bit of alteration. And so I came up with a similar but modified design that just took off, the two hundred years took off the eighteen thirteen to, I mean, to twenty thirteen and put established eighteen thirteen in the center. And this is what it came out like. And there's some expense involved in developing it, but I was able to work with someone to get it done. And I thought I would bring it to the county and ask if there was any interest in adopting it perhaps as an official county flag, since the county has some, a flagpole, for instance, that we could, and this is just a sample. They can be double-sided, thicker, they can be larger, they can be little garden flags. We could offer them for sale eventually if we would order a larger quantity, the price would come down. And we could get them for the Historical Society, the Tours Bureau, the Farmers Market, maybe the Chamber of Commerce, anybody who might have an interest in helping to let businesses and schools and others have these flags for their flagpoles to fly underneath the American flag, possibly underneath the Pennsylvania flag. And so I thought I'd bring it and share it with you and see if there was any interest in adopting the, the logo as a, an official flag for the county.
I certainly appreciate Commissioner Lips' efforts. The, the emblem that, that we're using, I think, has some merit and consideration. So I would be prepared to necessarily adopt this today, but I'm not necessarily opposed to the idea of an official flag.
My way, again, would be confusing the public because about a year ago Kathy talked to me about, you know, maybe we should have one for the county, an emblem, something that would be identifiable as ours. And so I went to the Historical Society and they are investigating the, you know, history of the county to see if there was one adopted in our history somewhere prior to all our memories. So I would not want to confuse things by having. So I would not want to confuse things by having the one that Bill's talking about, the one that maybe will come forth from the county, and then this one. So I'd rather not decide that today.
Yeah, I had, I had asked about this more than I think, Commissioner Litz, you had these.
Yeah, similar to what I did with the flag, I had those made.
And, and I think this has been, uh, used long enough, it's used on our logo.
I believe it's the part, part of the county seal, is part of the state seal. And so it's, looks like a lot of other counties, and I thought this one, this design was more uniquely ours. And I also went online and did some research of all the county flags within this state. And you can do a Google search and they show up rather quickly. Um, and I, I think that this is something that would stand out as uniquely ours, and at the same time, it takes really long, obviously using the good days and just altering it somewhat.
It might be demeaning to privilege that the county forests that have adopted such a, uh, logo. If there is one, I'd rather exhaust that effort, that's probably being taken underway at the historical society, and see what that means.
I had stopped at the historical society earlier this week, and they haven't had time to do any research there, so maybe they'll do it up again, but, they did, they did try and research it, or they didn't have time to research it, is what I'm gonna say.
So consider if we have these other thoughts resolved. Yes, Gordy?
I've been a resident of the county for a long time. I have never heard Saul ask about a Love Island County flag, if why does this pop up in this particular time as a thought?
Again, I have people come to me and say, I know businesses who are interested in displaying their county pride, and is there a flag available? And I said, you know, you're about the tenth person in the tenure of my commissioner to ask about it. And when someone, when people, different people ask that often, that there's a sincere interest in it. So I just finally thought, okay, it's been on the background long enough, and I played with it in order to produce something that I could share and give, um, some visuals to show.
You brought the idea of the flag.
I can't remember.
Yeah, Gordy, you can always come through.
You'll have to indulge me for a second, Bob picks you up, so we didn't realize we were gonna call this, so I'll be right in. But I can speak in the interest of time.
The interest of, um, identifying yourself, let's start there.
Thanks for having us down again, Pat Salmon from Honeywell, and Bob Reslin will be here shortly. Bob was, uh, at the prison this morning, he's wearing his project management card. He's down every two weeks, Jamie, and sometimes every three, and he meets on a project to update on the project and everything online and such. And, um, we wanted to dovetail this in, and why we're specifically here, Commissioner, is to talk about the windows, address the windows.
Thank you.
If you'll recall, well, thank you, I mean, if you'll recall, when we did the original project, we had, there he is, thank you. We gave him the intro and said, you're addressing the work. Good morning.
Good morning.
Bob Reslin. And if you recall, to reconstruct quick, we, we had looked at windows as part of the performance contract, and the economy wasn't there with the savings paying for them. And then advanced the program, you approved it, and Commissioner, you were kind enough to like us, there's a local vendor here, the manufacturers and such, and meet certain requirements, and veterans' business and such, and we said, absolutely, we'd recheck. And we did, and, uh, that was back in June and July, we had some emails coming back and forth. And what we found out was, there were some errors in the information that was originally provided. Uh, we did some, Bob and Neil went through, met with them a couple times, really took it in depth, also an investment-grade audit. Good news, bad news is, good news is we were clear, bad news is, we were correct. They will not fund themselves based on, on savings alone. The good news is, if you decided to ever want to do the windows, we could work with this vendor, and you could do them, but it would be a bigger avoided capital savings rather than energy savings, which is what our initial thoughts were. So that's the extent of where I'm at, if you want more detail, I think Bob would be happy to jump in and tell you what we found out and why and how and such.
I personally would like, you know, a bird's-eye view kind of summary, um, of how long it really would take, and what the overall cost would be.
I'll take it in steps, so, everything comes down, when you look at, on the energy efficiency is, what's your costs? What's your savings? When you look at it as a efficiency measure. The second type of project is, as you've come through, a capital enhancement, capital improvement project, where you're taking capital dollars to do a project that is on the books to be planned to do. So you have two different pieces. On the energy side.
This is the forward.
Correct. So on our side, looking at, on the energy side, is what kind of savings are realized? And how does that go towards a project cost? So savings that are realized for the windows is about maybe, it's, I'll round it to six thousand, it's like fifty-seven, fifty-seven plus dollars, so. It's six thousand dollars per year.
Per year, six savings.
Which would be savings issued to the windows.
Okay.
Now, where some of the misconception, I think on the window side that was discussed, was numbers that the window gentleman was using. He took numbers based on what the utilities were for, before the last project was completed, and all the buildings combined, which included the, um, prison and cedar, which is even part of it, so. When he took a look at what kind of savings could be generated, based on what you would say, yeah, you're gonna say maybe ten percent, fifteen percent, he used it on a bigger benchmark than really, I think the gas alone a year is only close to seven thousand dollars per year. So savings that we're seeing is, uh, between electric and gas, probably around that marker of that six thousand dollars of savings where he was projecting that there'd be savings almost exceeding thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Now, when you look at raw cost, and this is just taking what the window cost is without even management or markup or anything, raw cost, you're probably three hundred fifty thousand plus, just what raw cost.
What word are you using? Raw?
Raw cost in a sense, what, what would his, what would a vendor's cost be without bidding it? Putting in a management fee, or, you know, if you elected to do it directly, advertising it for, just what that cost is. So if you take that cost with the six, you had sixty-plus years of a payback.
Sixty years, wow.
Yeah, sixty plus.
That's a lot of difference.
Seven years than we were told.
That's a whole lot of difference.
Yeah. We, we sat down with him, I, I met him, uh, and his team at a shop, you know, to go through an understanding. He actually, I know Steve was out here before.
He's behind you.
Yeah, I'm here.
He actually came over with his team to, um, measure and take a look at the windows. Uh, I made sure that they had all the staging, protection involved that would be needed. So, so that's when we looked at it, as to how we were looking at the project on the energy side. Uh, it matched up to where it looked at for phase two, and in the previous times, the project was always looking at for windows.
So that was, that's an amortization on the raw cost, do you?
Correct.
What, what, what is install cost, do you have any sense of what it is with, you know?
Yeah, so, so a couple of things that we ran into is, um, you know, we would make sure that somebody was, to be able to be bonded. And I know on his side, with his business setup, he, he would not do a bond, uh, for a project, so we would have to either do something different, or, you know, bid it up to people, so that number could go up. But that three hundred number, you know, if it's going up into, um, if you're like a four seventy, you know, if you're a four fifty, four seventy-five, by the time you put in all your general conditions and items, you know, you're there. So if you threw another hundred, you're taking a sixty-plus years, adding another, thirty years, you know?
Yeah, and that's almost the numbers we used when we backed when we did our original surveys. There was nothing deceptive here, it was just the information that they were basing their plots on was always best rated by. And once we dove through a little bit, feel the impact, obviously.
Yeah, the costs were pretty much similar to what the raw costs were. I'll call part costs, everybody's different definition, but, um, those costs were similar. And I think where the difference is, is assumptions and projections that he was calculating things on was not really what, uh, what the county is seeing up to this date. So he took numbers based on all buildings combined, before you did energy efficiency projects. And then as you've been doing projects moving forward, you've been reducing your energy consumption and your costs. So those numbers keep getting driven down. And how, how much work would keep capping into six?
Wow.
In other words, the efficiency and the cost of energy now, those two combined, already driven the cost so low that when you take on an additional project like this, you just have a longer payback.
Yeah, so if you went back to say phase one, it would have helped a little bit more, but the county has been a good role model moving forward through the different things that we've done, and.
You should have started with them initially.
No, it still would have changed.
Well, at that time, they weren't really that bad, too, so I mean.
That's true, now we're chewing this office out of our pale.
You would have had more to work, but you, instead of a sixty or seventy year, maybe it would have been a fifty-eight year. It wasn't made much of a difference.
Like when it's not raining, you don't have to fix the roof. You're only able to fix it when it's raining.
I'm disappointed we can't get new windows, I'm, I appreciate these statistics so that I can understand why you're saying it's not. Sixty years is a long time.
Of course, those are a hundred years.
But, um, you know, forget a hun, half a million dollars, that's what you're saying would take to replace those windows, because I can see it as a need.
I, what I would, my recommendation to the county would be is, the windows is something that, uh, there's various grant programs that come around. That's something that if you would take a grant program.
You can keep us informed of this.
I'll backtrack that. What you need to do is take a look at a priority list as to what the county needs to do. If there's windows, and I imagine there's other things in the county. A grant program comes around, that could be related to something similar to that. That'd be a candidate for it, or for other things, capital pressure.
Okay. Thank you very much, I, I really do appreciate the, the solid information.
And I will, before Bob goes, the project we have at hand right now is one very, very, very. Our meeting, the bonds are sold.
Yeah, he's stating that.
Okay.
I, I have a question concerning the lighting, yes, uh, because I spurred my interest the other day when guys were in here changing these out. So I asked a couple of questions, and I understand that we're going now with no ballast. And a direct wire, uh, to one set of sockets and the other sockets cut off. And, uh, I have some buildings of my own, so I'm interested in doing a conversion. When I called the local electrical suppliers, they had some concerns about, at least the person I spoke to, about the, the hundred and twenty volt going correctly to the rather flimsy fluorescent sockets that we've been using for lower voltage over the years. Is there any concern? I know, obviously, it must meet code, or we wouldn't be doing it, but is there any concern for that at all?
Now, the components, what you have, keep it simple, is, uh, right now you have this light fixture up there that has a ballast. Everything comes to the ballast and feeds through the lamps. When you do the LED, you can either put in a, a new ballast, you know, if the ballast is updated or old, you put a new ballast in. And let's say you had four lamps in the fixture. So those four lamps work off a ballast. You have a bad ballast, four lamps don't work. Some of the new technology, when you work with, um, vendors and manufacturers who have invested a lot and have the proper product, they have what they call an inline ballast, it's actually built into the lamp. So what that does now is, is eliminates the ballast, which is typically on Steve's side, or like JJ or the prison. You have a bad ballast, you have your facilities team going out replacing the ballast. Now what happens, if you remove that entity now, that you're just dealing with lamps. Uh, so if you have four lamps, and if one has a bad ballast in the lamp, one lamp burns out, and you still have three lit, uh, and you come back. The tombstones that are changed out, we never came across where there's an issue or problems with that. I think it's a matter of, there's so much LED product that's out there, that's coming from overseas and coming to different areas, that you need to make sure that you're working with the right, right components.
And what, what brand are we using here?
The lamps that we're using is called Revolution, which is probably up on the high side of being out. Their lamps right now have ten-year warranties, where others are still five and seven years, but Revolution has been on the great side of the market.
So Sylvania and Phillips are on the back end of this, I guess.
Okay, there, it's just a matter of who, who we run across. We haven't had no issues with, with Revolution with the product. We've used Sylvania Phillips at different areas, uh, on projects, west coast or where it's supposed to.
And the tomb, the tombstones, by the way, folks, have fought for the sockets, they're shaped like a tombstone.
And they're all new, they're new that are being placed in, we're not using the old ones.
Oh, you're replacing the sockets?
Yeah, they're all, they're all replaced.
Okay.
So that might have been the concern.
That's a good thing, yeah.
That might have been the concern.
Are they, are they actually sturdier than the, than the ones that were?
Tombstones, they're probably like taken six quarters together, like they're small. Uh, and then they're just screwed in, but they're, they're all brand new, and then all the wire harness is coming back and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think you're gonna be, you're planning to be finished earlier than expected with the things that are flowing here.
Construction, keeping it short, you know, schedule was originally planned out going into June of two thousand eighteen. I believe we're probably, talking with Jamie, we're probably targeting like February, if we're pushing. Majority of the work is gonna be probably completed by the end of December, by going into February closing the project down. So we've got a good chunk on mechanical work.
I talked to J J yesterday, he's as calm as J J gets, so he's still fun.
He's got plenty of retirement.
And I don't, I don't think, Steve, you're, you're fine here?
Yeah, yep, it's good.
To that end, I'll, before I leave, I've said that before, the, the advance in the schedule is in no small part based upon the operation we did in the county.
Just had a conversation with Jamie. I thought I swore the email's at ten forty-five, or, he assured me it's at ten fifteen, so I apologize for my late.
You can be glad you're late.
You missed your, uh.
You missed your buddy.
I, I, uh, I, let me turn around. You're correct. So I played it like that, I knew it. Jamie gave me the heads up, it's a show of late.
That's, that's not, that's not what your ladies are.
No. Good morning.
No, we had a misunderstanding, he talked ten forty-five, I had ten fifteen.
Introduce yourselves.
Good morning, you may proceed.
My name's Jim Dunmoyer, I'm the director of Land and County Control and Alcohol.
I'm Michelle Howings-Speitzer, I'm the London County Department Director with Public Safety.
I'm here for two reasons, uh, and add one. The first thing I'd like to go over with you folks is the contract amendments. I presented a copy of the sheet that has three contract amendments on it. Uh, I will go over each, uh, contract change. Uh, the first one is the provider's fire tree. The facility is Conawaygo, Indiana, and is for adult rehab. You'll notice, uh, the original rate is N A, because we did not have a contract with them prior to me being here today. So this will be a new contract, and the rate will be one seventy-five day, with no contract cap over this facility. Uh, the second one is Pyramid Health Provider, uh, the facility's Quakertown, and the service is rehab, short-term for adolescents. Uh, just a side note, there is three facilities in the state that deal with adolescents for treatment. So it's very important that we have a contract with. So it's very important that we have a contract with an adolescent provider. Their initial rate last year was two-twenty-two a day and the new rate is two-fifty a day. So it has increased. And then the final contract amendment I'd like to present to you is for the Raze project, and that's for our Suboxone Youth and Orteam program. We have a cap on that project. Previous cap was twenty-one thousand eighty-two dollars. And I'm here today to ask that that cap be doubled to forty thousand dollars. The reason being is, the twenty-one thousand dollars serves four clients in Lebanon County. If we double that, we'll be able to serve eight clients. And there is a need, a waiting list for clients to receive that service. Where that money's coming from, I was here last week, as we all know, I pulled the line SDR grant that we are getting out of the county, and the twenty thousand dollars will be coming out of that grant.
So it's the statewide extra money?
Statewide, one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. So twenty of that I would like to apply to this service, because it is an MAT and it is allowable by DDA.
How many are on the waiting list?
Currently, three.
Three.
Second motion.
Same though?
Second. It's been moved to the second. Any other questions or comment? Here you are, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, say no.
The second thing I'm here for is Red Ribbon Week 2017. The goal of Red Ribbon Week is to increase the awareness of problems caused by alcohol and drug abuse. The Red Ribbon Week has come to symbolize a person's individual commitment to leaving a drug and alcohol-free lifestyle. This year's theme, and we have bracelets here to hand out to those of you who've won, this year's theme, this year's campaign theme is "Your Future Is Key to Stay Drug-Free." With this theme, our office, along with Compass Smart, our prevention provider, we're promoting an overall healthy lifestyle where children and parents remain active and drug-free. This year, our office has purchased eleven thousand of these bracelets. The idea, and that's what we purchased last year, and what happens is Compass Smart, our prevention provider, goes into all the school districts county-wide and presents these to the children. We believe it's not only educational, but we also believe the earlier we plant seeds in the young folks' minds, the better off they'll be as they, with their adolescence and become adults. What I'd ask the commissioners to do is I'm requesting that you declare the week of October twenty-third through October thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week in Lebanon County.
You may have a proclamation to that extent.
As always, I want to thank commissioners for their support, not only my office, but also the support of this specific Red Ribbon Week project.
Oh, we, my coworker Josh Mountains has contacted the schools and he has distributed a lot of these Red Ribbons already. We have quite a few, and we also have programs set up. I will be at Helen Calhoun Elementary School on Friday and Monday, or Monday and Friday of next week to do presentations for each and every classroom in the school from K-4 through fifth grade, about half an hour each class. We're also doing a presentation at Palmira Middle School. These are the two schools that we currently have staying set up and to do the presentations.
Just to note that we do offer that to all school districts, all classrooms, that we would present this kind of information and it's mainly done by our...
Sure, whereas, whereas the Lebanon County Commissioners are committed to promoting a drug-free lifestyle in Lebanon County, whereas Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse is distributing red ribbons to schools, churches, and businesses in Lebanon County as a symbol of each person's personal commitment to a drug-free lifestyle. Now therefore, we, Commissioners of Lebanon County, do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty-third through the thirty-first, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week in Lebanon County, and further encourage all our citizens to unite and help in Lebanon County becoming a drug-free community.
I make a motion that we adopt the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week.
Second?
It's been moved to the second. Any comment or question? Here you are, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close same sign, so ordered. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm set. This is a bit of a combination of kicking off our county campaign, but also to share some news about this year's campaign, which is unique, and also Kenny's ending up. But before we get too far, would you mind introducing yourselves and we can go from there?
Bob Hoffman, Campaign Chair, for United Way.
Who's your associate? Kenny Montseho, with United Way. Very good. You may proceed.
Thank you. We appreciate, and we know your schedule's very busy, we appreciate your invitation to share just a few minutes with you. The Commissioners and the county have always been very supportive of the United Way. And I know that all three of you at some point have served on the board as a liaison in the county, we appreciate that very much. Campaign is underway. Our goal is one million seven hundred and eight thousand dollars. And to date, we have a first report meeting last Thursday and we're at about three hundred and fifty thousand, so it's very early, but we have a lot of hard work ahead of us, I think. You know, the, this year has been very unusual with all the national disasters that occurred with the bonds that are being concerned. And I know that we reach out to all people in those regions, but you know, we also remind folks that the needs here in Lebanon County are great, and so we hope that the people will continue to support us and guard. And as Commissioner Phillips indicated, there are two things that are very different this year about the campaign. First, I want to say that the overhead of the United Way has always historically been very low, certainly low relative to the typical overhead of other nonprofits. Having said that, through the generosity of Golden Bank, the Vera Corporation, Butler Buscope, and the Nixon Foundation, we're happy to tell the community that this year the overhead is completely covered by donations from those four organizations. So what that means is that every dollar that is donated goes directly to programs, none of that goes to overhead. The second thing that is new this year, it's not new historically, but it is new for the last five years, is that this year is the year where we did our needs assessment. And we do that every five years. It's a very comprehensive program with a lot of input from community folks and organizations, and we've had focus groups and community town meetings and what have you. And this was done in conjunction with Penn State, and we now do have the needs assessment in hand. We shared that in our report meeting last week, and we have them here to share with you this morning. And I'd like Kenny to share some additional thoughts about the needs assessment.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to read a quick statement that I think just consolidates the why and the what of the needs assessment. First and foremost, United Way is pleased to present the 2017 Community Needs Assessment Report. We first would like to thank our United Way building bonds, as Bob mentioned, who together underwrite a significant portion of our administrative costs, the more than seventeen hundred community residents that participated in the survey, the organizations that distributed the survey, to the clients seeking services, and individuals who participated in focus groups, the members of the advisory group, and Penn State Harris Group. We had our community conversation throughout, a hundred and fifteen community leaders representing government, private industry, nonprofits, a plethora of services in our community. Really dove deep into some early indicators and also provided some direction for United Way as we look to spearhead some of the solutions to the issues present in this needs assessment. Every day in Lebanon County, we see developmental growth. This includes new housing destruction growth and infrastructure improvements, national employers relocated to the area, a general reduction in crime, which I think is very positive, and many other positive trends. However, significant needs do exist. Nearly forty-five percent of our children live below two-hundred percent of the poverty line, as countywide. When you look at the city, it's over fifty percent of our children. Over our three- and forty-year-olds, sixty-four percent don't have access to high-quality, early-learning education opportunities, which is a direct indicator to school success and also a preventative measure to really some of the issues we see later on in teen and adolescent behavior. We also have a higher share than the state of non-high school graduates here in Lebanon County. But with this report, United Way saw that to identify these and other indicators relevant to the health and well-being of communities most valuable strength, our people, our community. Our goal is to provide the community with an up-to-date, accurate collection of data reflecting both the needs in our county and the barriers faced by members in our community accessing services. And I think this is important here, because there is a number of indicators here, and this isn't a full report, but it must be noted that these indicators aren't mutually exclusive, they're interdependent and interrelated with one another, and I think it's important that we look at it in a holistic approach. And as a community, begin to work collectively, collaboratively, in addressing some of these solutions. I just wanted to take just a moment, and I will not review this whole piece with you, but I wanted to take you to page eighteen, where it talks a little bit about poverty in our community. And on page eighteen, it's, you know, eleven percent, one-point-three percent live in poverty. When you take, you know, that, when you increase that to two-hundred percent of poverty, which is that subsufficiency, it's almost thirty percent of our county lives below subsufficiency. When you look at our unaffordable housing in Lebanon County, almost thirty percent, might be even just a hair over thirty percent, live in unaffordable housing situations here. And I think when we look over then to the unmet needs identified by the seventeen hundred folks, and we see that dental insurance and dental care is number one, number two, and United Way, in partnership with Walsh Mountain, helps support the, I almost said free, but it is a significant reduction in cost and access to dental care through Lebanon Regional Health. But we also see finding a job is important, health insurance and transportation, affordable housing, and food assistance counseling in Lebanon County. So, you know, one of my questions is, if we were, as the county, to reduce poverty in Lebanon County, would by extension reduce the need of these services or the barriers that individuals are need-based accessing services? If you help raise a family out of poverty, will that come with insurance? Will that come with access to other services that jobs and careers provide for our community? There's another, I think, important statistic in here of the many, and that's, you know, five hundred and eighty-one reported child abuse cases in 2015. It is a staggering number for our community. I know there are many individuals working to not only relieve the stress and the issues persistent in that population, but also decrease the number of cases. When you look at the number of uninsured children in our county, there are five municipalities near Lebanon County where over one in four kids doesn't have access to health insurance. And so, you know, United Way feels that these issues are for the community to have and be aware of. And so we plan on in 2018, throughout this year, 2018, holding additional community conversations to really dive deep into these issues and develop community-wide goals that we can address collectively, collaboratively, so that, you know, we can reduce the number of people living in poverty, we can increase graduation rates and others, but we want those solutions to come from the community, from its leaders, from its experts, and certainly not from my team, my staff. We just want to be there, be the conveners of those conversations and those solutions. But we present this to you today, we, you know, it's our hope that other organizations across the community, not just partners of United Way as regards to funding, but anybody use this assessment to, you know, write grants, to hold community conversations, to really look at the issues persistent in our community.
I just want to comment that, along with the underwriting of the overhead, I mean, that's to me historic, because that's been a barrier to some giving, but if you take that off the table and now you have hundred percent of the money going to the agencies after they've been well-vetted by community panels, and you're tying the tool here to the agencies and challenging them to work on these, I mean, it doesn't get better than that for the donor, to make, have clarity and confidence that they're giving to a purpose that's gonna, you know, have results for our neighbors. So that's why I thought it was important, and we're always working at the county on increasing participation. And so this is probably our best year as far as having some new things to sell and to be proud of. And Bill, as a liaison, did you want to, this is the fun part for us, trying to figure out what we want to do to help bring attention to our campaigns, so.
Well, before I get into that, I, at the United Way Board Meeting this morning, as the liaison from the county, I commented on this particular publication and how relevant the information is. I know there have been things like this in the past, but this assessment booklet is valuable, I'm sure, to United Way and to the agencies. But as someone involved in local government, as I read through this, there's a lot of things here that have impact on the decisions that we make. So I again want to reemphasize and thank you for providing this, and it is valuable. As far as encouraging folks here at the county to participate in the United Way drive, we've had some discussion as a total board, and we have a little bit of difference of opinion, but Commissioner Litz, I know, was surveying the community last evening and came up with some suggestions. Some of them were obviously worthwhile, but would you like me to indicate what I'm willing to do at this time, or you want?
Well, as a preface to that, we want to acknowledge Bob Hoffman's fifth time as chairman, volunteer chairman, representing the hundreds of volunteers and the thousands of donors that are part of this network. But we wanted to present this for your good efforts on behalf of all of us, and thank you, and it may have a bearing on what we're coming up with today. That's why I wanted to insert that right now, so.
Thank you very much.
We'll give that to you.
I also had a comment on the community needs survey.
Sure.
I thought it was very well done, but I don't, I know anything can be interpreted many different ways. And for instance, the children that were reported as abused, our Children in Youth Service does a wonderful job. In fact, all of our departments do wonderful jobs in addressing these as they come forward. We are not letting them go undone. They investigate, they are under very strict rules that they have to follow, and they're on top of it. So I want to make sure that there's not a misperception, that these children are not being helped. They are perception.
Yeah, no, that's correct, and I think that's a valid statement, and, you know, it's no surprise that Lebanon High School has the highest dropout rate in the county. And, you know, they're looking at that, and they're like, see, see, Lebanon High, Lebanon High, there's so many positive things happening in Lebanon High School, it's amazing. And I believe we're both alumni at Lebanon High, we're proud of our school. I live in the city and my taxes go to support Lebanon High. But I think it's just important to just state the fact, the fact is, you know, they have the highest rate, this number of children are, you know, abused in some way, and it's not a blame game. But, when we talk about solutions, we want children united table, we want other providers at the table to say, okay, these are issues that are persistent, and how can we help reduce them? With respect to the one-hundred percent giving, you know, I think that's phenomenal, and I'm so very proud of our partners, amongst our partners who stepped up with multi-year gifts to support this. You know, United Way is a global organization, but what sets us apart from nearly every other national, global, world... how can we help reduce them? With respect to the one-hundred percent giving, you know, I think that's phenomenal and I'm so very proud of our partners, amongst our partners who stepped up with multi-year gifts to support this. You know, United Way is a global organization, but what sets us apart from nearly every other national or global organization is that we are autonomous. We are responsible and led, we're responsible to Lebanon County and we are one-hundred percent led by Lebanon County. We have a board of directors, thirty-six members strong of our community who make all funding decisions and all impact decisions. And so while we're part of a global association which has its benefits, you know, we are a one-hundred percent locally governed, locally focused organization. So when a donor or contributor or an employee gives to United Way in Lebanon County, one-hundred percent of their funds, unless they're designating it elsewhere, go to support all residents here. I think that's just an important distinction to note. You know, we're not funding research, that's important, but, you know, in another state, you know, we're funding direct services for our community here.
Well, we'll talk about quickly, maybe we'll be helping this as we go, but Bill, would you have?
Well, we had talked, two years ago, I think, we did the, you had the pie in the face thing and.
It was very popular.
It seemed like very well received. For whatever reason, Commissioner Phillips and I, people like to put pie in our face. So I think that's a viable choice and I want to leave that out there on the table as a possibility. And I would be willing to, rather than just one person, have that opportunity. I would like to open that up to five of our donors and what we do, we do this by lottery. It's not how much money you give, it's if you give, you're eligible to get involved in this lottery process. And I would like to offer on my own dime here, the, the opportunity to go to lunch with my wife and I, to those folks that would choose that option, so we would take them somewhere for a nice lunch.
Pie in the face or lunch?
Or the lunch, yep.
Okay. I'll do the same thing. I'll do five, so not, because that way we have more energy, you know, participation. So that's, that's good, that's a good compromise.
These would be locally made pies, I suppose.
They're very locally made. Our ladies from the Human Resources bake them on site.
Yes, thank you.
I would like to offer to take, I was thinking one, but okay, five, I'll have to work on my budget, five of the people to lunch. And also I would like to then encourage a conversation on how we can improve county government, whether it is through services or cost savings, and bring that back to a meeting for possible implementation. And I cannot take credit for this particular presentation because I did do a survey of my own to find out what would be meaningful to people because I think it's important to get feedback and input. And that is one of the suggestions that had merit. And the other one was that I would be willing to volunteer to go to one of the twenty-two funded organizations and provide a half a day of service, whether that is serving a meal at Lebanon County Christian Ministries or running a bingo game for veterans at comp here or helping a scout troop to earn a badge or the YMCA, whatever it would be, leaving that choice to the person picked. So the five that are chosen could have that option versus the pie in the face for me. I prefer not to do that one.
We have our, you know, standard set fifteen, we'll have fifteen winners instead of three, so that's a nice, Mr. Jee wants to add be another five, but he's a very popular target. But no, we'll go with fifteen and under those combinations, we'll communicate that to the employees and try to get some energy into the campaign and we can bump that participation number up a little bit in light of all the good things that have happened throughout our country. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Go ahead.
This should be displayed prominently at the United Way office, but thank you for your five years of volunteer chairmanship and dedication.
That is a record. I don't think it'll ever be repeated.
Well, if they ask me to do it a sixth time, I'll have to do it from the nurse house.
Thanks, guys. Thank you much.
How often do you have these meetings?
We have first and third, Thursdays at nine-thirty in the morning.
When's the next meeting?
First Thursday of November.
Nine-thirty in the morning?
I'm sorry, November second. November second.
Nine-thirty in the morning?
Yes, sir.
I have plenty of grievances concerning the emergency management administration of whoever handles the dispatching of the police department. I'm finding it virtually impossible to get police assistance.
Before you go ahead with your remarks, would you introduce yourself?
My name is Kirk Goscher. I was born in Lebanon, June thirteenth, nineteen sixty-three. I've been fighting with the city police for three years concerning the goings-on of my mother's house at Second Lane. She's lived there over fifty years. I understand culture change, I understand culture clash, but I don't understand is a complete lack of respect for my mother. I've been fighting tooth and nail, trying the right way, the right way, the right way through the police for three years. It's come to the point where the last time I was over there, I got my skull busted open and my face turned purple because I got beat up by three guys because I was trying to get respect for my mother's house. When the police show up, I'm always the bad guy. I don't even go over there anymore. I went over the other week to cut my mother's grass because I can't visit her at her own house, my own mother. I try to cut the grass, I go out to see what's going on out front and the neighbors have her railing dismantled. Now I don't understand why I can't get simple humanity from the government. I just want someone to take care of my mother's property. When I call the police about the cars parked illegally and everything, just to get a start on it, if they start ticketing cars, maybe they'll stop doing it. I argue and argue and argue with every officer under the sun. I go to the lieutenant, it doesn't do me any good. I argue with the dispatchers, it's not their problem. I get arrogance and condescension from them and people, Bob Dowd telling me I'm threatening his dispatchers, taking on the role of a lawyer, saying he knows exactly what I meant by my words. I would love to debate Bob Dowd on that point. I would crush his arguments in a matter of minutes. Now I'm very hot-blooded about this because my mother is in the equation, my mother. No one seems to be willing to understand that. Every police officer that responds takes the one instance that I'm calling about and doesn't understand why I'm getting so overblown about this. That's been going on for years and I can't stay at my mother's, my mother's house anymore. I can't even visit her.
Excuse me, we indulged you a little bit.
You indulged me plenty, I know. You indulged me very much and I didn't mean to go off on so many tangents.
No, it's not the tangents.
It's just been building up so much.
Yes, we would accommodate you at, at the next meeting with the, we have, at the beginning of it, we have public input.
And I'll try to be a lot more.
Look, we do have, we have some people waiting for our next part of our meeting and so.
I didn't even mean to talk at this one, I just wanted to see how things operated so I could be more properly prepared. And I let my emotions get the best of me again, it won't happen again, I apologize to everybody.
Thank you.
I will see you the next morning.
Thank you. Sorry for that. Okay, we'll do a juror. Stand and adjourn, thank you.